All right, good evening. Going to call to order the December 10th meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Please observe a moment of silence with me. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome out, everybody. It's been a soggy day, and it's going to start snowing tonight, so I'm glad everybody can make it out anyway. Kind of got a good crowd here, so I'm glad to see you all. So I'll give you my little spiel again that I gave last night. If you're signed up to speak and you've never done this before, you have a three-minute limit. A little green light will start your time. When you're almost out of time, it'll go yellow, and when you're out of time, it'll go red. I don't have anything as far as comments from me, so is there anything from other members of council they'd like to talk about?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, great, the Christmas parade for everybody who was involved with the organization. I thought the Clydesdales is fabulous. I thought it was a big crowd, everybody showed up, a lot of work went into that, and no policemen were called, and firemen were called, I was freezing to death, but it was a good event, very good, probably one of the best parades I've witnessed, so.
All right, thank you. City manager's comments.
I'm just going to echo Councilman Mumpower's comments. I want to say thanks to the police and fire. They did an excellent job to make sure everybody stayed safe throughout that parade on last week, and then also would like to mention Believe in Bristol with the Christmas tree lighting. I know Ms. Marney has played a role in that for just a couple of years, I think, right, Ms. Marney?
Yeah, Marney.
Okay. And we always enjoy her input, and I think we worked around everything, and I don't think we had any issues that night either that I've heard about, so everything went well the past few weeks. And we have the holiday season coming up, and I encourage everybody to be safe over the holiday season while you're out and about and visiting with family.
All right, thank you very much. So, item D is adoption of the agenda. What do we want to do here?
I make a motion that we postpone line item seven indefinitely, referring to the ordinance changing the charter.
Second.
Okay, so there is a motion to indefinitely postpone item seven made by Mr. Wingard, and second from Mr. Mumpower. If the clerk would call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right, are there any other changes? So I think that motion was just to remove that item, so we still need a motion to adopt the rest of the agenda.
I would move we adopt the agenda as presented with that one change.
No, second.
Okay, motion from the Vice Mayor, and second from Mr. Wingard. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right, first item on the regular agenda is presentation of the June 30.
Did we skip any non-agenda items?
Oh, yes, we did.
Okay.
Excuse me, I jumped right into it. I was excited to hear about this audit. Non-agenda members from the public, first person is Ms. Marney, and I apologize, I can't, I don't see what you said here, but come on up and tell us.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia, Euclid Avenue. I'm a property owner. I attended the public schools, grades one through 12. Very briefly, I will say this: Beware of false assumptions. The devil is in the detail. Beware of false assumptions. The devil is in the detail. Be sure you know what context is you are dealing with, with which you're dealing, whatever. Beware of the context. And I will make one more comment. Whose back is going to carry the load? Whose back is going to carry the load? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next person who signed up for non-agenda item is Marty Griesen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, ladies and gentlemen of the gallery, and city attorney. My name is Marty Griesen. I'm a landowner, taxpayer, and in my neighborhood, which is the corner of Newton and Peter Street, we have a very serious drug problem. The police are aware of this and have been doing some things, but it's starting up again as of last night. The house is included, 105 Peter Street. Every window around the house has peepholes in it, so they can look out and see, and what I've noticed from my back window, because it abuts their property, is that their back porch light is on when they have contraband. When they don't have contraband, it's not on. It's been, it's been, it was empty for several days, but now it's full of people again. Cars parking right above mine. I've had one car towed off for the simple reason in front of the place, because its tires are slashed and the windows are broken out. It was done last Thursday. I've talked to the landowner about this, he just seems to don't care. He just wants his pound of silver every month, that's all he wants. Something needs to be addressed about this. I was informed that they get enough complaints about this address, that the Commonwealth Attorney could write a letter to the landowner and have something done about the person living there, who was not living there. This person hadn't lived there since July, and her mother pays the rent. Something needs to be done, because somebody's going to get hurt. I have lots of older people in my neighborhood, including myself, because I am retired. I have an 85-year-old friend on the corner, she's afraid to go outside at times, there's so many, so much traffic, it's like a McDonald's, mostly at night, after dusk. It has to be addressed, and something has to be done, whether you can do it, or you can push the police to do more than they have, because they were patrolling, yes, and they were also looking it over very closely, right across the street from them, that's when people started exiting. But the front part of the yard outside this gated fence, it looks like a trash dump. I mean, it really does. It's awful, and I hold the landowner accountable for that. You have any questions, gentlemen, or ladies?
Mr. City Manager, do you want to address that?
What I'd say is, Ms. Griesen, I'm going to type up an email, I'm sending it to the chief of police right now. Mr. Wolf is sitting in the, we're back there on the line. He's the Commonwealth Attorney, we can speak to him about.
I've talked to John already. He's the one that got things started.
And so, you spoke with who?
John Austin.
Okay.
On the 15th of November.
Jerry Wolf is the Commonwealth Attorney.
I know Jerry, he grew up around the corner from me.
And you can talk to him about what you mentioned in your letter that he officially sent, and I'm sending an email right now to the chief of police to let him know your concerns, and sort of present that issue situation again.
Do I have any more time, sir?
Keep going.
Thank you. I was threatened by one of the buyers one day. He physically started to come at me, and I told him not to come on my property, because I had, I've been working in the yard, and had a rake, and I pointed him. He said I was going to take that rake, break it in half, and stick it up my, you know, what. I didn't say anything. His girlfriend is all the time video, videoing this, and I tell her, "Do you realize a video in a court of law can be used two ways?" I never threatened him, but I wasn't going to back down either.
I would encourage you, if someone threatens you again, to call 911 and report it to dispatch, so an officer can get over there, take a report, and address that situation immediately.
Immediately?
Mm-hmm.
Because I waited until I talked to John afternoon, and he said he's going to look into it, and that's, things started happening, so people started leaving. That's the reason why it looks like a trash dump out front. I mean, on your way home, I don't know, but, you know, I feel that if it was an affluent neighborhood, this would be taken care of. This is an older affluent neighborhood called Highland Park, on the old map, right off State Street, and I've lived there most of my life, except for the military and college.
What I tell you, I appreciate you bringing this to us, and
Sir?
I appreciate you bringing this to us, and we've got Mr. Eads, he'll get it straightened out for you, and we'll try and take some kind of steps to get this fixed, so I do appreciate it.
I'll talk to Jerry, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a free time.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. All right, so, no one else has signed up for non-agenda, so on to item one now. Presentation of the June 30, 2019 Annual Financial Report, presentation from the audit firm.
Mayors and members of council. Gordon James from Robinson Farmer Cox, auditors for the city of Bristol, is here to present the audited financial statements for June 30, 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Bradlun. Mayor, members of council, it's good to be with you all this evening. First thing I'd like to discuss are the reports that we issue, that we issue as part of your financial statements. There are three reports, the first one being the Independent Auditor's Report. It's a clean, unmodified report, the best you can do, no room for improvement. The second report is the report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. We do report two findings here, one that's been on the city's books for a number of years, dealing with the solid waste fund, and the fact that it's not self-supporting, and we also had adjustments as part of our audit that required us to report a SAS 115 finding. SAS stands for Statement on Auditing Standards. And basically, what that means is that the auditors can't be part of the internal control. Once the financials come to us, they have to be materially correct. We had a couple adjustments this year, one dealing with a fixed asset that hadn't been depreciated for a number of years. The last report is the report, a single audit report, is required when you expend in excess of $750,000 in federal funds. It's a clean, unmodified report. Any questions about those three reports? Okay, as part of the presentation, I gave out this handbook. There were a number of items included in that, first of which was the governance letter. This letter is required by us to have that communication withdrawn at the end of the audit process. It's a clean report, nothing negative reported there. We had a few management comments that we discussed earlier in depth. If you have any questions regarding that, please fill any of those comments, feel free to contact me, we can discuss those further. Also included in the handout were some financial highlights, items that we consider important. In those financial, in those highlights, we noted that net position for governmental activities increased about $10.9 million, while the net position for the solid waste fund decreased by about $5 million. Fund balance in the general fund increased, increased by about $5.3 million. At the end of the year, the city had about $16.3 million in unassigned fund balance in the general fund. Let's see if I can find that real quick. 16.3, that's an increase of about $2.2 million over fiscal year 2018, and about a $10 million increase over the five-year period that we presented from 2015. On the fund-based, on the fund-based statements, the city's financial statements look healthy. We're often asked how much of a reserve is enough, how much fund balance should we keep. We typically recommend about 15% to 20%. The city's fund balance, total fund balance, as a percentage of the expenditures, including the school boards, about 29%, and the cash balance was about 22%. So the city has adequate fund balance reserves. Any questions about those? We noted, we provided a debt summary for the city. The city has significant debt. It was down this year a little bit, but not a whole lot. We had to increase the landfill estimate for the old landfill, landfill number 498, I think the number is. So that had an impact on the debt for the city. The last thing that I provided was a summary of Gatsby Statement Number 87. Gatsby 87 will be effective fiscal years 2021. It deals with leases, and will require you all to put operating leases on the books as liabilities, offset by an intangible right to use that particular asset. Are there any questions about the audit process, about the financial statements you have?
Well, I think one of the things the community wants to hear is, what's your, what's your biggest positive takeaway from the audit, and what's your biggest concern with the audit of the city?
The positive aspect, obviously, the increase in fund balance was a positive this year. Net position increasing by 10 million, over $10 million is positive. Biggest concern would be the solid waste or landfill fund, and then also the amount of debt the city has, and the concern, as the principal payments increase over the next five years, how you will be able to fund those principal increases. That's probably the biggest concern I have.
Well, I appreciate it. I think it gives us a good idea, a snapshot of where we are, and where we've been, and also some of our biggest concerns going forward, what we need to figure out, so.
Certainly, the city's working hard to make improvements, and that's evident in the information I provided earlier.
Do we have any other questions? So, moving on to...
Just like to say, thank you, Mr. James, for your presentation, and the comprehensive annual financial report will be available on the finance webpage tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we need a motion, a second, to accept the audit as presented.
I move that we accept the audit as presented.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Farnham, and second from Mr. Mumpower. Is there any other further discussion?
Well, it was a, oh, I'm sorry. Well, I just want to reiterate, I don't know if everybody heard what the summary was at the podium, he's probably not talking loud enough for everybody here, but obviously, the positive takeaway, the city has built a significant amount of cash over the last five years. We were at 9% on fund balance, and now we're at over 20%. So we've, you know, literally doubled the amount of cash available on hand, so when times get tough, you need that to move from tax intake to tax intake, so we're in a good position on cash. But the bad news, or the biggest negative takeaway, was the landfill, which we have not even started to scratch the surface on the landfill issue, and we've got to do something as a city. So the community needs to understand that is our number-one issue, and it is adding to the debt load, because it's not got under control, it's still adding to our debt service and our debt load. So that's the number-two issue we mentioned, was debt load. So we've got two big problems here, and one keeps adding to the second problem. So we're going to have to deal with that as a council and as a community in a very fast way.
All right, yeah, I just wanted to say a lot of what Mr. Mumpower just said, but anyway, you know, the audit, it's a good audit. I mean, the city is getting a foothold, and we're doing good, and the thing about audits is they show you what you need to work on, where the issues and the problems lie, and we still have some very serious issues in this city that we are going to have to work on and get a handle on, and we need to start this year hard and heavy, figuring out a true answer for that landfill. That landfill is a beast, and it is going to consume us, and we have got to get our heads wrapped around it. At our current rate right now, that landfill is not going to outlive its debt. It's going to close completely full, and we're still going to owe one of a lot of money. We cannot let that happen.
And I'll take it as far as even say, I think we've got some incredible people in finance here with the city, with the city and the school now, doing, doing what we need to do. I think, you know, I'm optimistic, yes, we definitely have problems, we definitely need to take care of the, especially the landfill's the big one, but I'm optimistic about where we're going over the next few years.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for, you know, all the work you've put into it, Ms. Bradlun, also all the work you've put into it, so. In addition to this book you gave, you gave us this live reading for the evening, so I appreciate that also. Is there any other further discussion? The chairman of the council, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right, item two is discussion on referendum on school funding.
Mr. Mayor, if you all would speak into the microphone, I can hear what you're saying.
Hold on. I think it's a technical malfunction on my part, hold on.
It's everybody, I can hear, I don't know what you're saying, I'm just hoping it's all right.
Are we going to share?
God bless you.
Okay, so, item two was discussion on referendum on school financing. So we have a couple people who have signed up, and let me also say, we have a couple people who just wrote "school." Did you all want to talk on item two or item three? It's Ms. Taylor, and then Mr. Haney. Are you all out there?
Oh, I was about to say, I'm sorry.
Did you want to speak on two or three?
I don't.
So you don't? Okay.
Evening, my name is Jim Haney. I'm a resident of Bristol, Virginia. I don't have a dog in the fight, because I don't, my children are long since, you know, grown up and gone, but this issue is very important. It's equally important for the local, you know, groups that are still in there. Having the diversity of the four schools is better than having a conglomerate of one school, but that being said, that's not why I'm here talking. I think we need to, the council needs to admit that there might be more expenses than we're willing to talk about. We'll end up having three schools that are vacant, and it's great to think, oh, yeah, we'll sell them, but you've got a school over on the tracks here near Mary School that's been vacant for many, many years, no takers. You've got the old school board building that's not being used, so to think that we're going to sell these other three schools, or even give them away, is grandiose, I think, at best, you know, and I think we need to admit, okay, we might have approximately $2 million in cost to tear those down, and not just push it off, you know, for, like we have the landfill. Secondly, Mr. Perigin is a good person, but for him to think that Bon Road, you know, a corner there is not going to have to have a stoplight and turn lanes, I think is not accurate, let's just put it that way. And so, you know, based on the findings of that, you know, the roundabout, it's a proposed there at Euclid, I think you're looking at probably about $1 million to put that light in, and the right-of-ways and such that are going to have to be addressed to put the turn lanes in there. So these costs are going to be there, whether we want to admit them or not, and I think, you know, the council and the city has to say, okay, this is going to be three, maybe even more, million that has to come out of our coffers in the future. Whether we go and end up with one school or keep the four schools, that's a different animal, and so I think that needs to be looked at and admitted to. I heard a statement made that there is a thought going around of having the citizens vote on whether they should have the extra cost of keeping the four schools, or the cost of doing the new school, and I think that's a very good idea, because like myself, I'm paying school taxes even though I'm not using the schools any longer, but there's more people directly involved because they do have kids, and they have a right to speak, and most of them, I've talked to, people in general, don't feel that they are heard if they come here, you know, so that's a bad thing, and that's, you know, not going to be easily solved, but, you know, things like, you know, are attributed to you, Mr. Mayor, of, well, this isn't, you know, going to be a declaration on the school being built at Van Pelt. That's doing diser, if you stated that, that's doing a disservice to the citizens, because Mr. Perigin has been focused for two years on building that school. The monies that you would be voting on is only for that school, because the other option, Washington Lee, was going to cost more than that. So to say, oh, this isn't voting on where the school is going to be built, I think is being a disservice, and that might be part of the problem, that people feel that, well, the council isn't being truthful, they've already got their mind made up, et cetera. So I would suggest that the council think about putting this to a vote. It could be done in, you know, May of this coming year, and let the citizens decide, I want to pay a little bit more, or I want to have the consolidation, because they're really the ones that are paying all the bills. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, we have Ginger Fleener.
I live on Sherwood Road. I have two kids attending Highland View. Seems like to some, finance is the only thing that's important. Truth is, in this situation, it's not. From teachers to cafeteria workers to janitors, there's going to be jobs lost. Their source of income and finance will be gone. There is grants that can be applied for by the school board to improve our schools. It's not that they can't apply for them, they don't want to, and it just doesn't make any sense. Our schools aren't just a place to receive an education, it's a community, family. Each school is unique because of the community it's in. Our children are thriving because of what's in our buildings. Each school is fully accredited, not because of a building, but because of what's going on inside. It's not about just the building, it's about what's happening inside of each one that's making a difference. I ask, is a new building truly worth risking the achievements and milestones that our children are accomplishing now, to be thrown together and not getting the individual time and attention that they may need to continue to do the amazing things that they are doing now? Our children are shining as bright as stars right now. Are you truly willing to take the risk of them fading away because of the building? Are you truly willing to risk their success because of people failing to take care of our buildings? To say this is just about finance is a complete understatement. Attached to this finance is people losing their income, risking the success of our children now, for something that is unknown and has no guarantee of positive effects on our children. I ask that you ask yourselves, is the risk truly worth giving up? I ask that you ask yourselves, is the risk truly worth giving up the rewards our children are showing us now for something that could possibly change all that? You want the community to come and voice our concerns over important issues, and since this has started, the community has been shouting loudly, this is not a good idea. Please listen, we know our children better than anybody. I ask that you take into consideration the effects this could have on our children. Do not give up on them, they have come too far. As a mother's perspective, to base a vote strictly on finance without looking at the bigger picture is disheartening, disturbing, and selfish.
All right, next person is John Wilson.
Good evening, I'm John Wilson, I live on Spring Lake Road in, here in town, been in Bristol 50 years, uh, had seven kids to go through the city system, uh, starting in 1974, and, uh, have grandkids now, and I guess eventually have great-grandkids. Uh, I'm wholeheartedly for the new school. Uh, listened to what the lady just said and, and she's talking about, uh, the educational quality diminishing, where you're moving the same faculty or part of the same faculty and, or, or all the faculty and, and part of the administration, so I don't know where the, the lapse would be there. Uh, I keep hearing, talking about community schools, uh, this is not 1940 when you had a school, one-room school out in the country and everything, uh, revolved around it. Bristol's not a metropolitan city, uh, five miles or five minutes and you're across town. Uh, one, one, one question I would have or I'd like to voice is the traffic on Spring Lake, uh, it's already bad. I understand that there's some plans to alleviate some of that, but I would request that if it be possible that a speed bump be placed, maybe several speed bumps, on Spring Lake Road from, uh, the lake down toward the pool, and welcome to put one right in front of my house because, uh, I see cars going by there in the morning, I'm sure going 45, 50 miles an hour. Uh, I think the referendum deal, uh, I, I don't know how many meetings I've been to and I don't know how long, two years maybe, and, uh, i- if you wanted to come, there's been ample opportunity to come and speak either for or against, and, and I think the referendum idea is, is too little, too late. Uh, think you need to make up your mind and I think we need to move forward. Uh, if we don't, you know, I don't, I guess I've got 50 more years left, but, uh, I don't want to be 25 years down the road and looking back and saying, why in the world did we not build a school when we've got the opportunity that we've got with the situation that, that the street company is presenting? So I would urge you to do it and do it now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person is Archie Hubbard.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, I just attend, attended the financial report, the audit, it was very good. I'm glad to see the city is continuing to build up cash, uh, they're covering their daily operations. The obvious problem is, is our reserves are inadequate, and the landfill that, uh, Mr. Wingard, uh, mentioned asked the archer what was the biggest issue we had, and that was one of his first answers. We have $11 million closure costs for that landfill. What that means is, is when you shut down a landfill, no longer putting trash in it, you have to audit the thing for 30 years, and that's where the $11 million is going from, and it goes up every year due to inflation. So, we've got 15 years before we actually have to cough up the kind of money that they're talking about, and no talent what inflation's going to do to that number. What I'm getting at is, until we have adequate reserves built up, I don't think we should take on additional debt, whether it's official or unofficial or goodwill gesture, whatever you want to call it, a new school is going to require some kind of commitment, and without a casino to back us up, what we going to do with an inflationary period when business takes a down cycle? We've had a phenomenal run on the upside under Trump and nothing lasts forever on the upside, it's going to have declines. In the past, cities lost up to $3 million in tax revenues when the economy declines. What are we going to do when that happens? You're going to have to have plenty of reserves to cover daily operating control, not to mention the big debt payments that are coming in the next couple of years that are going to last for 20 some years. So, I'm all for schools, if that's what you want to do, if you don't want to do it, I'm for that too, but what I don't want you to do is do it now. If we get a casino, that'll give us backup that we need to cover during a down cycle. If we don't have the casino, we're going to have another albatross to go around our necks, and the only way to cover that is to raise everybody's taxes, which nobody on council wants to do, and I guarantee you nobody in the audience wants it. So, think hard and long on what's going to happen if we don't get the casino. How are we going to pay for these? Yes, the school says they can cover it. I don't know what economists they use, but there's never been one in the whole universe that was ever right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the last person who's signed up on item two, so I will open it up to a general discussion.
All right, well, a little over two years ago, I brought it up to put this on a referendum and let the people vote, and for whatever reasons, it fell on deaf ears, did not take hold, and it died. And here recently, I mentioned it again, and it seemed to have got a little bit more ground. I believe that this council needs to give this to the people and let them decide what this city is going to do. History has proven that these five members up here has failed this city, not this council here, but councils in the past, have failed this city tremendously. If we could have put the golf course on a referendum, we wouldn't have a golf course. If we could have put the landfill on a referendum, we would not have a landfill. If we would have put the falls on a referendum, we would not have the falls. This is a huge decision this city needs to make, and it needs to be the city that makes this decision, not these five men. So, I'm in favor of a referendum and give this back to the people.
I was going to say, I know you mentioned, you brought up two years ago, and I hate to admit, I, I wasn't there for that, but, so I mean, it's kind of a relatively new idea for me that we've been talking about, but it, you're saying, you know, give, give the people a voice and, and let them vote, and it's an interesting idea. I'd have some questions about how the, how it would be worded, uh, some things to work through with that, but it's an interesting idea.
Well, I'll just say, I mean, you're right, we talked about this, uh, we talked about it on more than one occasion, and, um, you know, we never come to a consensus, we never come to any agreement, uh, you know, just like Council McFarnum said, I've got questions about how do you phrase this in terms of, of a question, but more importantly, uh, I have bigger issues about having a referendum without a policy around that. What, what, what issues do we bring for a referendum without, and, and to me, i- if the idea was to do this with the schools, then we should have done that a long time ago and said, this will be a referendum, not wait till the night where we're going to take up the comprehensive agreement. We didn't do that, didn't come up last year, you know, it's, it's like a last minute thing, and I am very concerned at the precedent we would set, and without some kind of policy, I mean, what, what are, what's going to be the criteria? When are we going to have a referendum? What are these issues? Just to, to bring this up, and, and, you know, it's been talked about before, but if it, if it was something that was going to be pursued, we should have put the detail around that before now and not just come up at the last minute.
I understand that, but the wording on the referendum to me is very simple. The school, school system has been working on a new school for X number of years, and they've really lit a fire under everybody for the last two and a half years, and it's all boiled down to, they went out and they've been challenged and they, they have worked diligently on this. They have went out and they have taken every scenario they can possibly come up with, and the bottom line is, they're, the only thing that makes sense to them is a new school at Van Pelt. So, the wording on a referendum should be simple, is this city in favor of a new school, a two-school system, which is actually, in my opinion, one, because they're on the same grounds, side by side, at the tune of $18 million with the overall lifetime of $32 million worth of debt? So, the wording on a referendum, to me, is very simple. Does the city want a new school at Highland, at Van Pelt, at the tune of an overall $32 million debt?
No.
So, the wording, to me, is simple. I mean, the more you add to it and confuse the voter, do you want a school at Van Pelt at $18 million, do you want it at Washington Leaf for $8 million, do you want it here for X number, whatever, and you confuse everybody and split the votes, then you're going to end up back in the same thing, and something's going to win by a small margin. It needs to be a single item, ticket, to vote on. Does the city want that school at Highland View? And put it on a referendum.
So, kind of like Mr. Hartley said, I, I would worry about the precedent that we would set, you know, we have referendum for the schools, but we did not have a referendum to buy a new social services building. Do we want to have a referendum in the future to buy liners for the landfill? Do we want to have a referendum to buy a new leaf truck? You know, all of a sudden, you, you go down a slope where all of a sudden, you know, we don't make a decision anymore, everything has to be put on a referendum. It, so I, I worry about the precedent would set, and, you know, I don't think that the wording would be as simple as you think it would be, because you're going to have one side who's going to want something, one side who wants something else, and they're, and they're not going to agree on, even on, as simple as it sounded, the wording that you just presented, I don't know that they would agree on that. So, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how it could be done in a fair way, I don't know that it would be a good precedent to set going forward.
Well, here's the precedent that it would set, that this council here is saying that if a project comes before this city in the future that has the ability to have a negative impact on its people, the people need to have a voice. Fire trucks, we write checks for that, we can now, we couldn't two years ago. We don't need a referendum on day-to-day operations. We need refer, we need to let the people speak and have a voice if it can potentially have a devastating effect, and that is the precedent that we need to set tonight.
So, you, you mentioned giving the people a voice, you know, the people have a voice when they elect us, you know, we ran, we ran to make decisions, and that's why we're here. We're not here to just sit up here and argue every two weeks, we're here to actually make hard decisions for people, and that's, and I think that putting a referendum on it would just be kicking the can down the road so we don't have to make the hard decision, so that's what I'd say on that, and I mean, that's, that's what I'm looking at, you know, and, and the other thing, our schools, our three elementary schools, are out of compliance on ADA laws. They're out of federal compliance, so I think it's a, it's a dangerous thing to say, throw it out to the people and say, hey, do you want to follow federal law or not? Because if they, if they vote it down, then we've still got schools that are out of compliance for federal ADA regulations.
But we have set it in motion to take care of those problems. We have given them an extra $200,000, we've given them the ability to hire two more people to start working on the construction and renovating these.
Now, Mr. Wingard.
So, that process has already been put in motion.
How much more do you want to give to them? Because that process gave them one bathroom and a glass security vest, that's, that's not a process to bring them ADA compliant, that's a process to make things okay for the short term.
But we're moving forward, this council has done something to move forward that this, uh, school board has failed to do in 20 years, plus knowing the laws.
Well, how much more money do you want to put into it?
We can talk about that, because I'm going to, I've got it on the plan. We've already set aside 200 additional thousand this year for this budget. We're going to have another budget cycle in a couple of more months, and we'll talk about any more additional funds, but if we just gave them another $200,000, maintained what we've already given them, while we can still see those numbers in a positive light on our books, and still be able to meet our debt commitment that's coming, then we need to keep renovating the schools that we currently have.
Now, I'm going to go out on a limb, even if, even if we were going to give them another $200,000 every year to keep working on ADA requirements, the number that they would come to with us for a full ADA upgrade, to make everything like it should be, just for ADA, would be in the millions and millions of dollars.
I disagree with that.
Well, you can disagree with that, that's what all the experts have said, it'd be in the millions and millions of dollars, and if you do $200,000 a year, how many years does it take until they're ADA compliant? And how long do you, do you want to remain in violation of federal law?
ADA compliances, doors, sidewalks, ramps, and bathrooms.
It's also doorknobs, size of doors.
I said doors, doors.
Size of doors.
So, you're not going to have tens of millions of dollars in doorknobs, bathrooms, walkways, and ramps.
You know, if you, if you've had all these different people who've come down and told the school board, it's going to be this many million dollars to bring these ADA compliant, if every one of them is telling you something very similar, it, it's like if I go to a doctor and he tells me I'm fat, and I go to five more doctors that tell me I'm fat, and I find one doctor, 20 doctors down the road that says I'm not, the first 20 doctors said I was fat, why is this one guy going to say I'm not? Am I going to take his word for it?
Doctors misdiagnose people all the time.
Oh, my God. If all these experts tell us that it's millions and millions of dollars, at some point, you have to trust somebody's judgment on it, you know, people who do these, this job every single day.
So, I definitely understand what Mayor Osborne's saying, I didn't, I definitely understand what Mr. Wingard's saying too, how, I'm trying to look at both sides of this, okay, the idea of the referendum, let the people have a voice, let them decide. That's exactly what is happening right now with lawmakers in Richmond, saying, okay, if you want a casino in your city, you decide, you go to the polls and you vote yes or no. Um, but to argue on the other side of that, I, I do think, coming up with the question about how it would be phrased, would it be a yes or no question, would there be, do you want two schools, do you want three schools, or would there be options? We can do this plan and your tax rate might be this, if we go to this plan, your tax rate could be this, do you want to look at all those options? I think it would be difficult to try to get a question that everybody liked, but to try to figure that out would be the, the tough part.
Well, I think it is, it is true, and it's legitimate to say we should have a policy. Uh, it's unfortunate that we sit here tonight, we don't have a policy on when it's appropriate to go to the citizens with the referendum, because it is a fact that if we had impactful projects worth over $10 million, that goes over three decades, which the landfill would qualify, which Exit 5 would qualify, and the school project would qualify, that's a very simple policy, that's large dollars, multiple decades, that's what we're talking about for referendum, because our decision is not just this moment in time, we're making decisions on a long-term, significant financial justified project, and it's more than these five should have a say in that, because we're not the ones that's going to have to foot the bill for that long-term financial impact. So I would say, as an elected official, when you have a project like this, and we have been in several meetings, and we've heard both sides, but it's very much split down the middle, there is absolutely no consensus on what we should do and how we should do it on this school. So that tells you right there, as a city council person, you've got a responsibility to allow the citizens to decide, right? Because it's their tax dollars and it's their decade of time and family interruption that's going to be impacted here. So, there's a lot to this decision, and my concern is we're taking very big decisions and we're doing about 10% of the due diligence. I mean, this, this thing has costs, as we said here, we have yet to define. We just received an email of potential costs on road construction and widening sunset and putting in... and putting in roundabouts. There's all kinds of costs that we still do not know, right? So we have time to put a policy together, and I'm okay with that, and we have time to draft language and do it right for a referendum, which, where we sit today, that's the right thing to do for this community. So with that said, I'm sitting here, and I want to make a motion. And I make a motion to authorize the city manager and the city attorney to draft the legal language for a citywide referendum, to allow the city to approve a comprehensive agreement with PPA financing for a consolidated school with the Van Pelt location. That's my motion.
And I second that.
So we have a motion to vote on a referendum authorization from Mr. Mumpower and a second from Mr. Wingard. Is there any other further discussion on this?
Well, one question I have is, when we were looking at the charter, we were talking about the procedures and majority and supermajority, and this is for a vote on a referendum, so that would require a supermajority.
It's require a supermajority, which is a four-fifths vote.
Yes. That's correct.
All right, well, the clerk called the roll.
So there's more discussion, or no?
Is there more discussion?
This is a serious vote.
Yes, it is.
The community will remember this vote.
I hope they do.
They will remember every single person that voted. So we need to take the time, if necessary, to discuss it further, because this is a serious vote. One of the serious votes we've had, probably have.
Do you have any other discussion you want to do before we vote?
I'm just asking the question.
Can I ask a question that you read the motion again?
Sure. I make a motion to authorize the city manager slash city attorney to draft the legal language for a citywide referendum, to allow the city to approve a comprehensive agreement for PPA financing on a consolidated school with the current Van Pelt location.
All right, so that's the motion, and there is a second. So is there any further discussion? All right, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
No.
Osborne?
No.
All right, so on to item three, which is approval of the comprehensive agreement. Staff report.
All right, I think maybe I want to clarify what just happened. Based on that vote, it was 3-2, which means that that motion failed, and there would not be a referendum in the city. So I just want to clarify that for the public and for council.
Correct.
That's correct.
Approval of comprehensive agreement, the Bristol, Virginia School Board has requested that council authorize the signing of the comprehensive agreement, which would provide financing through the Public Private Education and Infrastructure Act, also known as the PPEA, to build an addition at Van Pelt Elementary. Once the addition is completed, three other elementary schools will be closed, and all elementary students will attend Van Pelt Elementary. Previous relevant action included a council vote back on November the 19th of 2018, where that comprehensive agreement failed as a vote of 3-2. After reading the comprehensive agreement, I would have four amendments to be made to that comprehensive agreement before I would feel comfortable for the city to sign off on it. Number one would be paragraph 18, section 3, the word "may" should be amended to "shall", that's on page 36. We would also need to add that the comprehensive agreement shall be terminated if the city's bond council deems the debt to be unconstitutional. Three, the city's financial advisor shall determine if there is an alternate form of financing that is in the city's best interest, and that the financing vehicle shall be used to finance the project per council and bond council approval. And four, council shall approve any financing model used to finance the construction of a new school before ground is broken for the new school.
All right, thank you very much. Public comments, we have one person who signed up specifically for this agenda item, and that is Ginger Fleener.
Ginger Fleener, Sherwood Road. I actually wasn't going to speak on number three, but after what just happened and some of the things I heard, I'm, I'm gonna say this, as a parent, a mother, a community member, I am highly offended at some of the things that was just said. I can well assure you that I am very well capable of making the right choices for my kids. I don't want someone else making a choice for my children, thinking that it's the right choice. You don't know my kids, you've never been around my kids, and I am by far no means incompetent, nor is anyone else in this city. When it comes to my kids, I will stand up, and I will fight for them. By no means is this the right thing to do. And I am so tired of people thinking that just because they have a title in front of their name, that they can override everybody else. Sometimes it's the smallest people in the world that make the biggest difference. If you would listen to them, you would go very far. And these high horses that are running around, eventually, you're gonna get, you're gonna get followed, you're gonna fall off of them. Be careful. The mistakes you make, they're unchangeable. And this is a very big mistake. Very big mistake. And I am not, not happy about what was just said. And I do not appreciate it, and you need to be held accountable for the way you talk about people, and the way you say things about people. It's ridiculous, and it needs to stop.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I didn't sign up, but may I ask a?
I'm gonna hold you to the three minutes. Come on up there.
Well, not forbid we go overtake the call.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Nancy Marnie, I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia, Euclid Avenue, I'm a property owner and a taxpayer. I went through public schools, grades one through 12. I think it's been made abundantly clear tonight, I think it already had been made abundantly clear, but I think the gentleman who spoke about the audit made it very clear, we just simply can't afford a new school right now. I don't think it's as much an issue of, will we ever need a new school? I think the issue is, not now. Not now. We are in no position to take on any more debt, none. Now, I have been in this chamber more than once, when the school board had to come back, I don't mean just this school board now, I'm speaking categorically. I've been in this chamber when the school board and its superintendent had to come back and say, yeah, you gave us money, but we need more. We can't pay our bills. Now, folks, it's my understanding that all of these schools are paid for right now, every one of them. They don't owe any money on the schools, they're paid for. The utilities are in, the telephones are in, the roads are in, it's all divided up. Big problems are broken into smaller parts for, for making them manageable. I don't think this is the right time, folks. Now, Mr. Wingard made a very good point, I think, in saying, all right, if we give another $200,000, you can continue to improve the schools. Think back a few years when the US government, you're talking, Mr., our mayor here, was talking about experts coming in. Well, we had experts at the federal level, and they were charging the US government $600 for one commode seat. That was an expert expenditure. Come on, folks. I know someone who owned a very successful restaurant in Florida, and somebody said, how can you maintain a restaurant? And, and everybody else around you is going out of business, how have you done this for 40 years? And he said, because I don't hire a chef, I hire a cook. We have already got the schools in place. If you can give $200,000 to replace the things that need to be replaced, do it. That beats a Sam Hill out of a $36 million debt, when we are already in debt until the year 2042. If we do not spend one more nickel tonight, we will be in debt, if nothing changes, until 2042. Put the new school on the back burner, make the best of what we have right now, which is a gracious plenty, I might add. It is a gracious plenty. Put your money into your teachers, your curriculum, and your leadership, and tell everybody to get out of the way and watch our dust, because there'll be plenty of it. It in the building we need, teachers, curriculum, leadership. Get this city out of debt, folks. The Keystone Cops almost destroyed us. They literally almost destroyed us, and they are on the course of doing that again as I speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh?
Come on.
Appreciate the time again, John Wilson. $200,000 doesn't go very far. I'm in the building business, I'm not in the commercial business, but you can't build a decent house for $200,000, much, much less maintain old buildings. I think it was a bad idea to give them $200,000. I think you should have approved the school before, and I certainly think you should approve it now. What's more important than our kids coming along? And, and we've got buildings that are older than I am, almost, and that's old. As I said a while ago, I urge you to approve it and approve it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna do one more, and it's Jackie.
My name is Reverend Jackie Nothlin, I'm pastor, household faith community church. Mr. Mayor, to the council, and to the city manager, and those that are helping keeping this city together, I really truly appreciate it. This, I have spoken so many times, we are so tired, and you have said we're kicking the can, and we just have to just do this one thing that's before us, and, and let it be done. But I have been challenging you, if we just wait and go around this corner to 2020 and see what's going to happen. Highland View needs to come down, we know that. Highland View needs a new school, we know that. The citizens are saying, the taxpayers are saying, we're willing to pay more money to keep our community schools than to go in that debt with one school. We're willing, I have more petitions here, but then when I heard about the forum was back again, I thought, surely you're gonna go for that and let the people speak? Surely tonight, you're not going to vote for the finances against what the people are saying? People will take their kids out of school. People were literally moved to keep from putting 1,100 kids into one school, which is one way in and one way out. There is no other way to Van Pelt, but one way in, the back road off of O'Appleton Road and Bottom Road. There's no other way in. There's no other way in. We have kicked this can around, I know you're frustrated and you're tired, we all are. But if you just go around this corner of 2020 and see what the money is going to look like, not the casino, but look at the businesses, look at the good that's happening. We can build the schools, we can take $200,000, make a manicapacist or whatever we have to do. It is less expensive than putting $36 million. The, all of the schools was $42 million, so what's that difference? What's the difference than all, each school being repaired at $42 million, which was a blown-out number, than the $36 million that we're gonna be indebted for? Let's take care of what we have. And before I leave, let me say this, it is highly offensive, and it is highly offensive for the citizens to see, that we're not having a voice on this one thing, the taxpayers' money that we're gonna have to pay for. And just because a city councilman won't speak for his own community, because he personally wants this thing done, this is highly offensive to those voters. Now, you let somebody else go over, I got one more else thing to say. The attitude and the body language that you don't care about what people are saying is highly offensive, and you need to stop it. You need to give it to the citizens and let the citizens tell you, or you need to listen to them. You said it was dead on arrival. Stick to your word. Stick to your word and make this happen, just go on around to 2020, and I guarantee you, you'll be glad that you made that decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so, next thing we need, we need a motion and a second to proceed to discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this comprehensive agreement with the four amendments that the city manager stated earlier.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve what the four changes read by the city manager earlier.
Second?
A second from Mr. Hartley. Council discussion.
Well, I, sorry, go ahead.
You made the motion, you go ahead.
First thing I wanted to say was, I think the language that the city manager added, this amendment, item number two, that the comprehensive agreement shall be terminated if the city's bond council deems this debt to be unconstitutional. I think that's big, I think that's important, I think that helps protect us, I think it helps protect the city, overall.
Well, I'm gonna start with, what a sad night in Bristol.
Yes, City, yes, City.
This council has truly said, your vote does not matter. They know what's best. What a sad night in Bristol. If this comprehensive agreement passes tonight, you can put it in the bank, your $32 million more in debt. And that is a sad, sad fact. Yeah, I would agree. This is a pretty solemn moment, when you got a council that has all of the data in the rearview mirror, things that were done to get this city in financial trouble, and all the things that were done to try to dig this city out. And here we think we're smarter than the community, and we're gonna put this community further on an obligated $32 million hook over three decades. It's almost criminal. It's unbelievable. So I don't want to hear anybody talking about the falls again. This is your falls. This is your falls. Because this city can wait, just like Ms. Marnie said. This city's got some cash right now, we can wait. We do not have to force a consolidated school and the financing that goes with it down these taxpayers' stroke, and that's exactly what we're doing. And for this council to sit here and vote against a referendum, absolutely says, we do not care about your vote. That's exactly, you remember that next time when you get to that voting booth, because that's exactly what they said. So there'll be more important decisions, and they'll go the same way. It won't matter what you think. So now you can see why you're not being listened to. So let's make a vote.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
One thing I wanted to bring up is, I think it's important to know what we're voting on, because the motion is to approve this comprehensive agreement. We're not voting on breaking ground on a new school tomorrow. We're not voting on that. We're voting to approve this comprehensive agreement. We're looking at the financing, and, and I'll bring it up, because we voted on the same comprehensive agreement last year, and I voted no on it. And then I was the one that made the motion, so we could get to this point here. So, we've had a lot of meetings over the past year, and I've been, tried to be really clear on, we're two separate bodies, the council and the school board. clear on, we're two separate bodies, the council and the school board. This is such a complicated issue that we've had to work together on a lot of things. We've had a lot of joint meetings. The school board has talked about the need to build a school. So, with what we're currently at now with these plans with JA Street, the plans are only about 40% done, and all the numbers we have are roughly estimates. This will allow us to get the completed plans, that final number. We got lucky a little bit. This wasn't our intention, but by not voting on it last year, voting on it now, we know that the interest rate is better. We may have saved the city over $3 million in interest if this were to go through. Ultimately, the school board will have a final vote on breaking ground on the school. But it's definitely a complicated issue. We've worked together on a lot, the school board and the city council, but I think it's important to note what our two separate roles are, as far as financing, some of the other plans we've looked at. In this plan, we talked a little bit about roads, sidewalks, turn lanes. There's a cost to that. The city will have to come up with that money to pay for that. But I would argue, wherever a school is built, that's gonna happen wherever a school is built. However many schools we build, we'll have to do some changes with roads, sidewalks. So, that's definitely a factor in all this.
You know, Mr. Farnham, you gotta, you gotta look the community in the eyes, and you can always talk yourself into going down the path of a decision, right? But at the end of the day, what's right's right and what's wrong's wrong. And that's what we're talking about right now. So you were given a chance there to withdraw your motion, and we know what's right for this community is not to go down this path. So, are you gonna take the last chance you've got to withdraw your motion? Because you sat up there and heard the financial situation this city's in. And the last thing I said to you when I walked through that door coming downstairs is, anything we do to add to that puts a lot of risk to this city. One economic downturn, and we can't pay our obligations. Now what we're doing is, over 30 years, adding 17 million in interest obligations, 18 million in principal, 17 million in interest, at a reasonable interest rate. So if it's 15 million, an entire school just in interest payments, and we've already got 108 million of debt with interest, we probably with these kinds of decisions will never be able to pay off. So you gotta continue to say no until you're in a position to do it. And all I've asked for is, we all want a new school. It's just a little bit of down payment on a neighborhood school, which is only gonna cost 12 to 15 million, and you put three or four down, which we have, because we saw that we had 20 million in cash, even with the obligations, there's still 16 million sitting there. And if you just put four or five million down on a neighborhood school, you have saved over $10 million in interest over a 30-year time period. But once you sign that document, once you go down that path, you're obligated for 30 years. You just sign that note. So are you gonna do what's right and withdraw your motion?
Every day since last year, since we brought this up last year, including today and tomorrow, all of our schools, three of our four schools are not handicap accessible. We're in violation of federal law. Of all the plans that we've looked at, this comprehensive agreement that the school board is saying they wanna go forward with, this allows us to get to a fully handicap accessible, safe building as quickly as possible, and I would argue as inexpensively as possible, because all of these other plans we've looked at, that the school board's talked about, it not only involves us doing the roads, doing the sidewalks, but it involves us purchasing more property, for we already own this property free and clear. That's a big savings to the city.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that's the thing, is you talk about the, looking at what's coming, and to me, I mean, as I said last time when this came up, and voted for it then, and I still support it, because this is a chance to solve the problems with the schools. For, you know, we have, for over 30 years, known these schools, the ADA Act, we haven't done anything. We haven't done anything to renovate schools.
I haven't sued yet.
Well, and that's why we need to do something.
Why do you think I haven't sued?
But the point is, I can see no other, you know, that we're lucky. You're right, we're lucky, we have some cash on hand. That come at a hard price. I mean, that come through, actually, going back six years to raising taxes, to begin to set some of that aside. It come from making cuts. It come from luck that the economy's doing well. So, to try to say that we can continue to set money at that pace aside, it would take, by my calculation, six years to set aside what they say we need to do, just to deal with the ADA and safety things at the four elementary schools. And by the time we've set the roughly $12 million, they say that would take aside with the interest, you're gonna have to wait another year or two, because the costs are gonna go up due to inflation. So that's just to get to that point. When you look at every other opportunity here, this is the only one that comes out that requires no additional appropriation. In fact, the schools, because of the interest that's gone down, end up taking, there's a buffer zone. They originally had planned on using up to 270,000 of lottery proceeds, which they do in every other plan but this one. So there's a little bit of buffer in case, which gives me a little more confidence than last year. You know, but every one of these requires some outlay, as Councilman Farnham said, not only to acquire the land, but an ongoing outlay. Usually, somewhere, the cheapest, I think, is around a quarter of a million dollars. So that's additional money, year after year after year. This doesn't. So when we're looking at, you know, what are our challenges, particularly the debt coming up, we're looking at, you know, if we go this other route, taking cash that we could use to have on hand, to build up a reserve, or to use, as we did last year to set money aside for debt, we're already taking future cash flows to pay for this, rather than using the existing cash. And so, to me, as I look at it, I just don't see any other alternative that's gonna get us a new school within six, seven, eight years at the earliest, and that's gonna cost us any less, especially in terms of an ongoing appropriation. We can do this with the existing money. And I know, you know, again, the location, that's on the school board, and different people have different opinions about that, but a lot of people don't wanna see their taxes go up. And I can tell you, if you pick any of these other plans but this one, there's a good probability it might, because to come up with that additional appropriation, we might have to raise taxes, you know? To wait a few years, I've heard it said, wait on the casino, it might happen, it might not, and even if it does, it will be three to four years before we even see the first nickel from a casino, because, and then, the only thing we're assured of is whatever the difference, if they invest $200 million per the state law, if that transfers to the assessment, that's the only difference we'll see in real estate tax that we know. We'll see some lodging and some meals, but we have no idea what that'll be. You can't budget that. You can't do that. And so to say, well, we can wait and can use that money, that's money we could use on a lot of other things. We could use it on debt, we could use it on a lot of other problems this city has. The schools are not the only problem. And I guess to me, you know, this is our chance to solve a problem for once, to solve a problem. And the thing is, for two and a half years, we've been sitting here talking about buildings. Everybody that comes up there sits there and says, it's what goes on inside the building that's more important. So rather than take money that we would cost extra, I would rather see that go to help the teachers get a raise, to attract and retain teachers, to bring aides back into the schools. It was just a couple of years ago that the council sat up here and cut the amount of local funding, which I didn't agree with then. We need to bring that back up to help, and especially to the quality of education. So, as I look at this, I just don't see a better way financially to do this. I think waiting, as Councilman Farnham said, we got lucky that, if you asked me last year and I said it, that I would've expected the interest rates to go up. I don't know that I can sit here and say that now, and even with the interest rates going up, I don't know that some of the, because of tariffs and other things, the cost of goods, or that may be an offset. I don't, I really don't know. And that's the thing, we won't find out until we take this next step and move forward in this process, so.
One thing that you just said, Mr. Vice Mayor, you know, we can't tell our kids, you can't go to a handicap accessible school, because we don't have them. You need to wait six or eight years for us to save up some money.
Eight years.
Right. So we've been talking about how we can't kick the can down the road anymore. We haven't built a school in 45 years, almost 50 years in our city. Seems like we've been talking about building a school for about 10 years now, almost, and we still haven't done it. So, you know, one thing we've been talking about this whole time is elementary schools, but we haven't talked once about our middle schools over 100 years old, our high school, where there's 1,100 students. We've got some big expenses coming up there, and guess how much money we as a city have put away specifically for high school and middle school renovations? Zero. So, the school board is saying, let's take care of the elementary schools. They're saying they have a plan where they're not gonna ask us for any extra money for an elementary school. It's budget neutral, is what they're saying. It does make sense, Mr. Vice Mayor, you mentioned about taking that money and putting it towards things like teachers, like curriculum, and then also putting together a plan to save money for our middle school and high school projects that are coming up. And, well, just one more thing. You mentioned, you know, that it's not about the building. We've heard that a lot, and I definitely agree with that. It's about what's in the building that's important. But the other side of the argument is, when the building has asbestos, higher levels of radon, lead-based paint, and they're not handicap accessible, I could argue it is about the building if it's not as safe as it could be.
But they'll take it out of the kids, the world's failures that put up in this.
Is there any other further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna say that, you know, you can't sit here and say there's no additional appropriation. When you say there's no additional appropriation to do this project, you're saying that every single cost is absolute, and it's absolutely known. And we know sitting here, we do not know hardly any of the other costs, including the roads, the deconstruction of the current schools, the asbestos abatement and all that goes in with hauling that off. So those costs are real. And so what Mr. Hartley's saying is, he didn't approve any other appropriations. So it's gonna be interesting when those appropriations come to this council, because they will come to this council, how that vote goes down.
That is not the intent. I mean, I know that we need to build a road, and that's the thing, you sit here and say, you know, we have had all kinds of comment from people, and that's one that, to say that we don't listen, that was one, when we first started talking about this, that was a major concern, and I had been to more of these things than, as many as anybody. And I appreciate everybody that's come, Ms. Flinner, Ms. Knottland, Virginia Goodson, I think I've been to everyone, just about everyone I've been to, and they've been faithful to come, and I appreciate that. And I, you know, but when you hear that, yes, we know we need to do the roads. And again, that's why, rather than have money set aside to do some small renovations and wait, we could take that money and deal with these roads. And again, we have estimates, and it really depends, you know, how much of a road you wanna build. How much will VDOT pay? We're still trying to figure that out. So, you know, again, last year, and I went back and looked in the newspaper, that was the whole thing, that these other costs, that we didn't know, the little bit for the intersection there at Bonham, and to tear down Highland View. Well, we have built up enough cash on hand, we could take care of those. What I'm talking about is the additional ongoing appropriation that's gonna finance the payment. The payment pays for itself through the savings. All of these other things, every other project, there's not enough savings in the project to make the payment. So, and even all of these other projects, if you went to a three-school model, that only takes care of Highland View and Washington Lake, you still gotta fix Stonewall Jackson. So there's still costs there. So, and everything we have cost, in all of these other things, when we look at these numbers, they're just rough estimates. We don't have us, on all these other projects, a solid number to really base this off of, but even the rough estimates put this anywhere from, that we're gonna, they're gonna need at least a quarter of a million dollar appropriation or greater. And that's the thing, they're gonna need that or greater. So where's that gonna come from? And what's that taking away? What's the opportunity cost of that? Again, we're just talking about elementary schools. We still need to be, we could take that quarter of a million dollars and start setting it aside to deal with the issues of ADA and safety and things that are coming up at the middle and the high schools, to actually get ahead of a process for once. I mean, it's brought up, you know, why, you know, why not do that for all these schools? Well, the reason, the only way that we're able to do this is through this alternative financing. There is no other way that we're gonna be able to do this. And we've talked about that, you know, that's just it. We've talked about it, we've looked at it, we've sat down with the school board, we've had input from the citizens, we've talked about, before last year, we probably looked, I know they went on that bus tour, looked at 12 to 15 sites. Come back and look at another half a dozen to a dozen sites, to look at everything, to get rough estimates, to see what's feasible, which ones make sense, which ones work, which ones don't. And the school board chose this. Now it's up to us to say, can we afford this? And of all the things that have been proposed, this is really the only thing I think that we can afford, because it doesn't add, you can take and make the payment out of the existing appropriation to the schools. So the only thing that would jeopardize you making that payment is cutting the school budget in the future from your local appropriation. And if we think that we've got all this cash that we can accumulate and set aside, then why in the world would we cut schools if we've got excess cash? Why, there's no reason to. We don't have to to make a budget crunch, so why then? There would be no reason to cut that appropriation, so we should be able to make this payment going forward. And so, this is the only one of these things that I see that we can do that. Everything else, we might could, if this happens and that happens and the other, but I cannot, to me, that's risky. This is taking something that we know the most about, and then, as monies come in, as we set up excess cash, if hopefully the economy stays good, hopefully some of these large economic development projects take off, and then we're not worrying about dealing with renovations to our elementary schools anymore. We can deal with other issues, and the city has a lot of other issues, and that's what, that's why we started building, setting cash aside last year for the debt, for an emergency, to look ahead at what might be coming. And again, if we don't, I'm afraid we're gonna end up paying an awful lot more, and it's gonna be harder to pay, and some of these other things, because right now, you know, as the audit said, you know, the big issue's the landfill, but the other's the debt. I mean, any cash that we get extra, we need to be setting aside to make sure that we can deal with that debt in a few years when it comes. And so far, we've set some aside. We've been able to push that off a little bit. We, you know, that's one thing in the whole idea of building up cash, that last year it was $3 million we had. Well, we took a million of that and set aside, and that's gonna continue over time to go to debt, so the amount of cash you have available is less. So, again, that's, as I look at this, there's, this is the thing that I think we can afford right now. Everything else, if we wait, it's gonna be that much harder to afford.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one more thought I had, because I heard two people both say that we don't really know what the final number is. And that's true. These plans are only 40% complete. We don't know what our exact interest rate will be. We know- know according to this agreement what it's not to exceed. But, again, I just, and people may disagree with me, but we're not voting to break ground tomorrow. We're not voting to cut the ribbon, open the doors up. We're, the school board is saying, let us get into this agreement and get the final number, and see exactly how budget neutral it can be. That's what they're asking for tonight, for us to vote on.
One last pitch to you, Mr. Farnham. You've got one last chance to do the right thing.
I'm, I'm going to do the right thing. I'm ready to vote.
All right. Let's vote.
All right. Well, I was going to say some things, but I think we have spoken ad nauseam about this, and everyone knows where I am on it, and, you know, what I feel about it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we know.
I appreciate that. So if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Wingard?
No.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I have thirty seconds?
No, you may not. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, you can't. We're going to take a, because we're going to take.
We're in an open discussion here, and I have a question.
We're going to take a ten-minute recess.
I'm sorry?
We're taking a ten-minute recess. All right. We are back from recess. I'm going to wait till the city manager comes back to his seat.
All right. So we're back from recess. So item four is resolution of support for residential treatment facility. Staff report.
Counsel, we have Ms. Breeann Hubbard here tonight from the Department of Health. She can kind of give you a brief overview of what this facility would do for Southwest Virginia, and who they plan to treat. So I'll turn it over to her.
Good evening. As you are aware, Southwest Virginia is in the midst of an addiction epidemic. We have high rates of hepatitis A, hepatitis C, drug overdoses, and babies born substance exposed or with neonatal abstinence syndrome. This epidemic comes with costs to our economy, to our children, to our community. Earlier this year, stakeholders in Smith County began an ambitious process seeking to procure a state-owned unused building for the purpose of establishing a therapeutic community residential treatment center in Marion. This community, to be called the Appalachian Center for Hope, will serve residents from throughout Southwest Virginia, including Bristol, in several phases. The first will be inpatient treatment for women, allowing them to bring their children. The choice between treatment and being with their children is a major barrier for women who are interested in recovery. Other phases will include inpatient treatment for men and a day reporting program to reduce jail costs. Our Southwest Virginia delegation will introduce legislation during the upcoming General Assembly to transfer the building to state ownership. We appreciate your consideration of this resolution, which, if approved, will be included with the bill. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Forbes, Everett?
Well, I just want to say, you know, we all know that, you know, there's, there's a lot of social crisis out there. There's, drugs are running rampant in this country, and it's destroying us as a nation. It's filling our jails up. It's premature children that will have effects, negative effects, for the rest of their life. So I want to applaud you and encourage you to move forward.
Thank you.
I would like to know more about this facility, and what its full intent is. But as it stands right now, I fully support this, but I do want to know more about it.
Right now, or do you want me to get you more information?
If you want to brief us more, you go right ahead.
So the idea is, we're looking at a large unused building that we're hoping to renovate to make ten beds right now, which would allow women to bring up to two children with them, ten women and their two children. And the idea would be that you've got peer support services, so people who have lived experience with addiction and are in long-term recovery. You've got licensed counselors. The Mount Rogers Community Services Board will provide the services through what they have called Project Link, which is an intense case management services for pregnant and parenting women who use substances. And we're also hoping to partner with the, maybe the Tobacco Commission, the Job Corps, the community colleges to work in some job training, so that when our participants graduate, they're not only in recovery, but they've also got a better economic outlook. We're looking at some models similar to TROSA in North Carolina. I don't know if you've heard about that, but that's a program that's entirely self-sustained by what they call social enterprises, which are essentially small businesses that the residents run. So they have a moving company, and a gardening company, and an auto shop, things like that. And they've been in, in operations for twenty-five years. We're not going to just start at that level. But they, they save the state of North Carolina like seven and a half million dollars a year through this program, and there's no cost to the residents. So we're looking at trying to incorporate some things like that as well, so that we're benefiting our participants and the community and the overall economy of the region. Does that answer more?
It, it enlightened me a little bit.
So this will be located in Marion and serve the Mount Rogers Health District?
The idea is that it's going to serve all of Southwest Virginia. For the health district purposes, we kind of chunk that from Roanoke down, but that's not set in stone at this point.
But that was going to be my next question. Is there anything else in Southwest Virginia? Is this really the, the only facility of this kind?
This is really the only facility of its kind. The closest place that women can bring their children with them. There's one in Lynchburg, and there's one in Charlottesville, and then there's one in Richmond. So there's really nothing in Southwest. And there's not really much of any inpatient residential treatment that's long-term. We've got detox facilities, but you really need long-term to change the chemicals in the brain, so.
Ms. Hubbard, I have a quick question. Are people, can they be court-ordered to this institution, or is it strictly a voluntary program?
It's a great question. We have not gotten that far yet. So I can, I'll follow up on that and get back to you.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Hubbard? All right. So we will move to the reading of the resolu, thank you very much. We'll move to the reading of the resolution. So resolution of support. Whereas the Bristol, Virginia City Council recognizes there is a need for mental health and substance abuse treatment facilities to be located in Southwest Virginia to serve our residents. And whereas there is an existing facility located on the grounds of Southwest Virginia Mental Health Institute in Marion, Virginia, that could be utilized for a women's residential treatment facility to aid in providing services to assist in helping women stay clean and sober. And whereas communication has occurred between the Commonwealth of Virginia and interested parties from Smith County to lease said building as a budget-neutral lease for three years, requesting all repairs and renovations be made by the Commonwealth before entering into such a lease. And with the understanding, should the programs not be successful, the building will remain as property of Southwest Virginia Mental Health Institute, and now therefore be resolved by the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Hereby request the Commonwealth of Virginia work with Smith County to establish a residential treatment facility that would be open to serve all residents of Southwest Virginia. Approved this tenth day of December, 2019. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
I move to support.
I'll second.
Okay. So a motion from Mr. Wingard, second from Mr. Hartley. Is there any further discussion? All right. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Item five, resolution to support an increase in state funding for small and rural school divisions. Staff report.
Counsel, Dr. Perigin has drafted a resolution which would ask the General Assembly that would provide increased funding for teacher pay, at-risk add-on, school construction and renovation, and enrollment loss. It's important to note that the budget is now in the process of being worked in Richmond, and this resolution here would go to our legislators in order to show support that we need additional funding for our schools here in not only Bristol, but in other rural and small school divisions across the Commonwealth.
All righty. Very good. Thank you. It looks like no one has signed up for public comment on it. So we'll move to the reading of the resolution. Do you want to read this one, Mr. City Manager?
Since it's longer.
Uh-huh.
All right. Resolution to support an increase in state funding for small and rural school divisions. Whereas Virginia's unemployment rate is the lowest it's been in recent history at 2.8 percent, and whereas Virginia has been recognized as a top state in America to do business, and whereas Virginia has been designated as the tenth wealthiest state in America, and whereas Virginia finished with significant budget surplus last year of $230 million, and whereas over half of Virginia's schools were built over fifty years ago, and more than 28 percent of Virginia's schools were built before World War II, and whereas inflation is accounted for, state per pupil funding is down eight percent from pre-Great Recession levels, despite a significant improvement in Virginia's economy, and whereas Virginia ranks thirty-second in per pupil funding nationally, and whereas per pupil spending varies widely across Virginia, from nine thousand in some rural districts to twenty thousand in some suburban districts, and the statewide average in per pupil spending trails the national average by about $1,800 per student, and whereas Virginia's teachers are paid more than $9,000 less than the national average, which ranks us thirty-fifth, and whereas since the Great Recession, localities have increased their share of funding, public education by 2.9 percentage points, while the state has decreased their share by 3.3 percentage points. Whereas in Virginia's rural schools, where localities have seen the least post-recession growth, those numbers are even worse. Rural localities have increased their share of educational funding by 3.9 percentage points, and the state has decreased their funding to rural schools by 4.4 percentage points. And whereas the national average for the additional funding for high-poverty students has been estimated between 20 percent and 29 percent, and Virginia caps its funding stream at 16 percent. And whereas the research is clear that teaching students whose families live in poverty is more expensive than providing education to students of affluent families, and whereas when all funding sources are considered, Virginia spends less on average per pupil education in high-poverty districts than the rest of the country. And whereas small and rural stakeholders believe that p, p kindergarten through twelve public education is critical to the vitality of their region and to the Commonwealth as a whole, and whereas the rural school divisions have seen a decline in K through twelve enrollment of almost 24,000 students since 2009, which represents an eight percent decline, and whereas 16 percent of students in the rural school divisions live below the federal poverty level, and whereas 48 percent of students in rural school divisions are eligible for free or reduced-price lunch, and whereas these rural localities have the ability to raise only $19,941,000 by increasing property taxes by one penny, and whereas over eighty school divisions across the Commonwealth could be defined as rural and/or small, and whereas local poverty and tax revenues prevent rural localities from funding schools at the same level as affluent localities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bristol, Virginia City Council asks the Commonwealth of Virginia to adopt a budget that increases teacher pay, increases the at-risk add-on either through the Virginia Board of Education's Proposed Equity Fund, or in its current form, provides state funding for school construction and renovation, and reinstates the enrollment-loss funding stream adopted this the tenth day of December, 2019.
All right. Thank you very much. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
I move we approve.
I'll second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Farnham, and second from Mr. Hartley. Is there any discussion?
Well, yes. Have a comment to make on that. The resolution that was just read speaks about the state of the schools in this, in this state. Over 50 percent of the schools was what age? Over 50-plus years.
In our, in our locality is over 50, over, over half of Virginia's schools were built over 50 years ago.
Exactly.
And over 28 percent were built before World War II.
So we're not the only locality in Virginia with old and aging schools. But yet, we are the only locality in Virginia with the debt load that we currently have. Nobody comes close. Ladies and gentlemen, Bristol, pay attention. Things are not right.
All right. Well, I'll talk about the resolution. One thing that I appreciate, you know, last night we sent, we passed a resolution to send to our state legislators about supporting our constitutional rights. And, and I appreciate that we did that. And I think that this is another type of resolution that we should send to them, to remind them again, not just on constitutional rights or on something else, but Southwest Virginia exists. And I think it's important that they know that we need money. Rural schools need money, rural school districts need money. So I appreciate that we're taking action on this to let people know, you know, not to forget us down here. If there's no further discussion, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Item six is approval of lease for Commonwealth's Attorney Office space. Staff report.
Counsel, Mr. Wolf has been working for six, at least six months to find a different office for his staff. Currently, he has nine staff members at his current office, and that room, or that space is insufficient for nine staff members. There are some current structural issues with that building as well. We have, the mountain has encroached upon the back wall of that building, and you can go to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and look at that back wall, and see a noticeable bow in that concrete wall. They've also had a tree that has fallen through the roof and has put a hole in that roof that has yet to be fixed. I think they attempted to fix it, but it hasn't been fixed as of this date. The landlord has not fixed that. Mr. Wolf searched the citywide to find office space for his staff that would accommodate that entire staff. He worked eventually with the owners of the Kerr-Boswell Building. They have additional space on the second floor of that building where he can move his offices. It'd be enough space for every one of his staff members, and maybe a little bit of room to grow, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Wolf? And, okay. And this, this lease, as it's presented here, is for a five-year term. This lease includes utilities, water, sewer, electric. It does not include internet, telephone, or TV, and it also includes janitorial services. Currently, with the current lease payment that we pay, plus the janitorial services that the Commonwealth Attorney Office has used, we pay roughly $2,600 a month. This is an increase of $200 a month, which would include that janitorial services now. So a total increase of roughly $2,400 a year. Previously today, I sent you a copy of the utility bill for that office, and I think that range is close to about $500 a month for his office. And with that being said, the only additional would be the internet, telephone, and TV and cable, which we currently pay as it is. We do have the ability, I reached out to the owners of the building. This is a five-year lease. We do have the ability to go for a shorter term if we choose to do so. I know I've had conversations today with at least two council members about the length of a shorter term. I would strongly suggest to not go less than two years. I know we would like to be able to say that we could be, potentially have the Commonwealth Attorney's Office in another building that is owned by the city within a year. I think that would be optimistic, based on the fact we haven't been into the Social Services Building to do a, a complete review of it, to see what would need to be done. So I would ask for at least a two-year minimum on this lease.
All right. Thank you. So no one has signed up for public comment. So what do we want to do as far as taking action on this?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lease with one change, and that's the term of the lease. Rather than a five-year lease, it'd be a two-year lease.
Okay. So we have a motion for a two-year lease on the office space in the Kerr-Boswell Building made by Mr. Farnham, and looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Second from Mr. Hartley. Council discussion.
So let me understand, Mr. Reed, the difference in, in what we currently pay would be $200 more a month. We'd get janitorial plus utilities. So given the utility bill's 500, we'd actually save approximately $300 a month?
That's correct.
Okay. That's good. And the two-year lease, we could renew, and when we do, will the rate change?
The rate, based on the way the current lease is proposed, would increase to $2,900 a month after two years.
So that's an increase of...
Of $100.
Okay. So we'd save $300 now over what we're currently paying a month, and then at two years, it'd go up $100?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And what's the reason for the two-year versus five?
Well, in my opinion, we just bought DSS, a brand-new building up on Exit Seven. Okay? So that building's going to be vacated. They're, they're going to be moving here before too much longer. Don't know when, don't have a timeline on it, don't know how much money government is going to spend to go in there and renovate it. Probably $50 million. We'll wait and see. But the DSS building is fixing to vacate. It's three stories. It's roughly, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Mr. Reed, it's roughly 10,000 square feet?
Yeah, roughly.
Between the three floors?
Right.
All right. The only reason why DSS has been hollering to get out of there is because they've got people working in the basement that was never designed for it, and there's moisture down moisture down there, and they run dehumidifiers 24/7 trying to control it. But the other three levels can be renovated fairly easily. Okay? But we don't need that building sitting idle and vacant once they make that transition to Exit 7. So, this city needs to be looking at what it can do to offset other expenditures on leases for these other departments. And Mr. Wolf has been growing in manpower, women, whatever, and they're running out of space. So, I don't personally have a problem going with a two-year lease to give everybody time to transition into the new building, get this building renovated. But I would oppose to continue a lease going forward after that two years when we have adequate buildings sitting vacant that can be renovated. So, that's my concern.
I think, I think the two-year lease gives us time to see exactly what's going on with the current Social Services Building, because it, you know, depending on how much it costs to fix up, it would be a nice location, I think, for any kind of city office. And, you know, in the meantime, at least, we'll have, you know, the Commonwealth Attorney in a place that, that fits them, doesn't give them extra room, but fits them, and doesn't have a wall caving in in the back. So, I think it's, I think it's at least good for the next two years, and it's, it's only an increase of, you said, 2,400 a year, so 200 a month.
Well, but there's also an off, there's also an offset by the savings from the-
Yeah.
It's actually a net savings.
Net savings.
Yeah. So, that, I mean, that's-
There's net savings of roughly 3,600.
Yeah, that's fine. That, you know, to me, the two, two years, I guess, give you enough time to, to look at social services, see what, what it would take. I mean, we don't really know timeline, the cost, anything there, but it deals with, with Mr. Wolf's issues. If he's got trees falling in the roof and stuff, we need to, to take care of that.
Is there any other further discussion?
Unless you have something to add that, that you want to talk about?
No, sir. I was, I was just here to mention-
They have multi, they have multi-room tents at Cabela's for $500. You okay with that?
Now he's getting it.
If you'd like to put one over the men's restroom in my current space, because it was raining in the bathroom this afternoon. You all know that, you're well aware that we got two new attorneys, and we have one of them working in the conference, working at a desk in the conference room, has no privacy at all. We have another one working in a room with the secretary and all of our filing cabinets. So, there's no privacy there either. We currently have about a little more than 3,100 square feet. This new office is 3,400 square feet. It has eight separate offices, so we would have two secretaries in one office, and everybody else would have their own office in that space. It's set up a little, little more organized than what we have now. So, we tried to negotiate something that was as close to what we're paying now as, as we could. I didn't realize that there was an offset with the utilities, but that's even better. But we've had maintenance issues. The air conditioning is not working in the back, and right now, it's not an issue, but it's been out for, for about two months now. We had a tree hit the roof over the men's restroom, and it has been raining in the building every time that it rains. The tile floor is breaking up in the front. We've had lock issues. We've had several issues with the building, and it's just not being repaired. And I'm just afraid, you know, we've been there for 15 years. Actually, the office has been there probably for 18 years. But I think it's just time to move because we've outgrown the space.
So, I know you, you mentioned, you know, the problems. It sounds like you'd want to get out of there pretty quick. What would your timeline be for movement?
The proposed lease was for January 1. That's gonna take us some time to move. I'm hoping that the sheriff will allow us to use some of his inmates maybe to move the bulk of our office over there, but as soon as possible.
Well, we appreciate all the work you do and the, and the staff you got. And it's interesting you mentioned the sheriff and inmates, because I wanted, you know, to ask you that we, you know, we do have a cost issue with all the inmate growth in the jail. So, whatever you can do, please work with the sheriff, because we're trying to come up with some solutions to get people out of the jail and back in the community.
We are. We're trying our best for that.
Yeah. We had a meeting just a couple of weeks ago about what we can do to establish some, some training pipelines and things that we could do to try to get folks' skill sets trained where they can get hired in the manufacturing workforce. So, stay close to that, you know, especially with the new sheriff-elect in Washington County. I think if we all work together, we can, you know, well pay for what you need, and your, your time would be well served if you could help us do that, so.
We'll certainly keep trying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, if there's no further discussion, if the clerk would call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. So, let's see. We tabled item seven. So, on to the consent agenda. What do we want to do here?
We're gonna have to break up the minutes, because there's folks absent from several of those minute items. So, we're gonna have to vote on those separately.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you was absent one day.
Are these in here?
I was absent on the 4th. So, I'll make a motion on the eight. We just vote on the minutes separately.
Okay. So, you want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the minutes right now?
Right.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Mr. Mumpower to approve, to approve the consent agenda minus the minutes.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Hartley. If the clerk would call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. On the minutes.
Counsel, you need a motion for October 22nd, and then you'll need a separate motion for-
November 4th.
November 4th, and a separate motion for November the 12th.
Okay. So, first, I'd like a motion on approval of the October 22nd minutes.
I move that we approve the October 22nd minutes.
Second.
Okay. So, motion from the vice mayor, second from Mr. Mumpower. The clerk would call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain. Next, I need a motion on the minutes from November the 4th.
I move that we approve the minutes from November 4.
Second.
So, motion from the vice mayor, second from Mr. Farnham. If the clerk would call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Abstain.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. November the 12th, we were all here. So, I need a motion and a second on that one.
I move that we approve the minutes of November 12.
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Mr. Hartley and a second from Mr. Farnham. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. We stand adjourned.